We'll call the meeting of the December 12, 2022, board meeting to order. Join me in the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, thank you. According to our agenda, we have time for public comments. Anybody here that would like to address the board? Please come to the podium, state your name and address.
Hello, my name is Reed Welch. I live at 1813 Red Oak Ridge in Carver, Minnesota. So I have two things just to talk to the board about. The first thing is, it's a bit wild, but I was an election judge for the first time for this election.
Thank you.
We had over 2,000 people come in person, and there were no major issues. Things went smoothly. And the city staff did a great job in keeping things smoothly. The lines were very manageable, and I think everyone had a great time. And then, you know, just some of the, you know, election integrity controversy, just for the general public that may be watching this. I think what I didn't appreciate until after I was election judge is the amount of work that goes in after the polls close. There is very meticulous record-keeping, there's counting, there's cross-checking by many different people. So I have absolutely no concerns about the integrity or the results. So I think everyone should feel very confident, and the county and city did a great job, so. That's that one. And then, slightly less fun is taxes. So unfortunately, I was unable to attend the truth in taxation hearing, but I was able to attend the one from my city. And I kind of learned something that I think maybe is a helpful feedback. I'm not sure, like, you know, when you get your property tax bill, it says, you know, your residential homestead value, like, oh, my goodness, 20% up. But in my case, my taxes actually went down this year. So my general understanding is that, you know, that property tax value is not what you're going to pay, right? It's kind of sets the pool for the available funds, and then the actual value is set by the budgets of each of your, the county, the city, you know, the school district. So if those budgets are, you know, reasonable, and your, you know, city is growing, your taxes actually went down. So my, like I said, my property tax value went up 20%, but my taxes went down like $200. So maybe just a shout out to Carver City Council for doing a good job keeping taxes low. And you guys, I think we were relatively flat. But I don't know if there's some, I checked my property tax statement, and I'm not, you know, I'm not sure what the legal requirements are. But if there's any simple way to, you know, explain that better to people. Like I said, I only found out because I went to the public hearing and asked a question. So like, well, no, it's kind of this, you know, pool, and then the assessor throws it in, and, you know, complicated formula comes back with your budget. So, I mean, I'm not sure we can really sum that up on the website or something, but just maybe some helpful feedback. And then, just again, thank my city of Carver and you guys for keeping the taxes low, even though my property value went up. So that's it.
Great feedback. I think you should have come to our meeting. That way, you could explain to everybody else
Yeah.
the reason that valuation and taxes don't always correlate.
Right, yeah, it's kind of like, oh, yeah, once, you know, the city manager and the city council kind of, I'm like, oh, yeah, that totally makes sense, right? Because, you know, and then your taxes are percentage of your house. So if the budget of the city and county state flat, but your house, all the houses went up 20%, then your tax rate goes down because the budget was flat, right? And it's, you know.
About a time you throw in the school district's effect on everything. If we could, I mean, they're always working on the wording of how do we can incorporate that explanation.
Yeah, so, so if you're complaining about your home value, go to your city council or the county board and tell them to be more tax-efficient. So, thank you.
Great feedback. Thank you very much. Anybody else this morning would like to say a few words to the county? Seeing none, we'll move on to item number two, the agenda review and adoption.
We'll move.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Workman, second by Commissioner Udoman, to approve the agenda as presented. Any discussion? Seeing none, all.
Are you adding or amending it to move the work session? And if you're going to do that, I'd suggest to move it to 6.2. Is that possible?
Sure, it's up to the board.
Who made the motion?
Yeah, well, and I would add, we do have a staff here to cover the work session.
Commissioner Workman, what was your intention on the motion?
As amended, Mr. Chairman.
As amended. So you're amending it to move the work session?
Again, I would suggest doing it after 6.2. We, that's a quick item, we can get back.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, under discussion.
After, to 6.2.
Is that going to play into, somebody has to, fellow commissioner has to leave early, depending upon how long the work session? Is that going to mess anything up for Commissioner Fahy?
It will, sir.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Just a quick question, why?
So I don't know that we can approve a budget before we hear from the parks, because it's a material piece of the overall. We were talking long-range planning, and we're talking about overall budget. This is a, parks, parks and the park planning, it's a material piece of it. I'd just like to hear that before we push our vote.
Okay. Any other discussion? The long, okay, all in, yeah, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, we'll move the work session to 6.2 at this point. Item number three, the approval of the minutes of the November 22 special session and the December 1 budget hearing.
Move approved, Mr. Chair.
Motion by Commissioner Lynch, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Fahy. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Community announcements, Commissioner Fahy.
Mr. Chair, thank you. Just had the opportunity to attend the Cologne area transportation plan open house at the community center in Cologne. It was very well-attended. Just wanted to thank Darren and Angie and their team. This is a critical time for the Cologne area, and we need your input on the long-term transportation system vision around the city of Cologne. So if there's others out there that would like to give feedback, please reach out to Darren Melkey and Angie at the county and provide them with your feedback, please. And then also attended the AMC conference last week. That was very enjoyable and also very informative, as always. That's all I have, sir.
Other community announcements. Commissioner Udoman.
Mr. Chair, I also had a chance to attend AMC, and sometimes you wonder if, is it worth your time to get there? And I think this one was well worth it, a short drive to Bloomington. We get breakout sessions, so I had a chance to go to a session on corporate culture and enterprise and development of the next generation of workforce. You and I had a chance to be at a self-insurance one, which was very interesting, because that's one of those escalators within our budget. And to keep an eye on opportunities that are there based on the data that we have, and it was informative as well. Sometimes there's big, huge problems and challenges and opportunities that come with county government. So I had a chance to hear from the commissioners in Ramsey County about Rice Street that sits behind the Capitol, which has kind of been a conundrum, and how they've navigated that and engineered that and made that different and better. Had a chance to see one from Health and Human Services, the commissioner that's stepping down, Jan Malcolm, was there to do a fireside chat. And then the DHS gal was there. And one of the things that they shared was, with the way the workforce is going in the foreseeable future, 20-plus years, we'll have to simplify, and we'll have to do more with less, and we'll have to quite simply do less. And so I thought that was interesting from them. And then probably the greatest interactions is with our peer counties. People that do what we do and compare notes as to how they're doing, are we doing better, how are we not doing? And so make a point to almost every breakfast and lunch to sit with a different county and see what they're up to. Second of all, I wanted to, it's been out there and percolating, but we're going to resurrect retiree coffee. Hopefully, they'll be well-attended Tuesday next week before our board meeting. So all retirees are welcome to be part of that. We'll be on hand to answer questions and give some updates. And then we just came out of legislative priorities. And so those that watch this board meeting, legislative priorities, we have 18 of them as far as our county. Commissioner Fahy and Commissioner Workman led the charge on what those lists would be. We voted those in. And then we present those to our legislators so that they can get to work at the Capitol. And so not only did we do that with the group today over breakfast, we had Senator Coleman, Representative Nash on a call last week. And then separately, we'll do similar meetings, and myself, in the areas that I am part of with Victoria and Chaska to find out what their priorities are, so that we're all on the same page. And then final, finally, a comment that you had made when you were up on the podium. I've gotten feedback from 30 people about taxes. 27 asked that they be lower, and there's a push of that towards city-centric, or the city line on your, on your taxes. And then three people said that they were good, and they were encouraging us to even raise them even further. So just wanted to offer that feedback publicly for the feedback that I'm getting from the community. So, thank you.
Other community announcements. I'll just reiterate a few things that were mentioned. We did have a legislative breakfast this morning where we met with our legislators to show them what our priorities are for this upcoming legislative session. And then it was mentioned that AMC, the majority of the board, or actually the whole board, was down at our AMC convention, where we did have a lot of very interesting and informative breakout sessions, besides our other business that we take care of at the convention. And the last thing I'd just like to mention, this is the holiday season. Hopefully, you've been able to, or you have planned on attending not only services, but also a lot of concerts and vest for services that are taking place. There's a lot of time and effort, and it's great music and participation by all those involved. Any other final community announcements? If not, we'll move on to the consent agenda. The consent agenda has a number of various items. The first one is a service agreement for the 212 project. Then we have a drug court grant. We have a temporary social worker service agreement for construction management services. We have another service agreement for Rose Avenue project. Another service agreement for Salem Avenue Bridge project. Another service agreement for Carver Link. We have a charitable gambling application. We have a ploy relations coordinator. We have a settlement agreement on utility and easement for Highway 61. We have a joint agreement with the Department of Transportation. And we'll update on some board policies. And finally, the Health and Human Services and Commissioner warrants. Anything that should be pulled separately? If not, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as listed?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Motion by Commissioner Lynch, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Workman. Any discussion on the motion for the consent?
Mr. Chair, I just had a couple of questions. One is the 266,000 for the contract for state-funded land acquisition.
Which item is that?
5.1.
Yep.
I'm sure there's an easy, easy explanation, but does it make sense for us to have that in the future be an in-house resource? So that we can bear the benefit of their expertise versus hiring a third party?
Commissioner Rot, County Engineer.
It's the.
I got a promotion.
Yep, exactly.
WSB and Associates.
5.1? Okay.
The Benton Town.
Oh, WSB?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, ideally, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Udoman, Lyndon Robgen, Public Works Director. Yeah, ideally, we would, we would want to do that in-house, for sure. But the workload, we don't have the people to, we don't have the people to handle it. So it comes down to all the projects we have on the horizon. So the good thing about this particular professional service agreement, if it helps, is the person that's doing it actually lives in the county, very close to that area. And she has, she knows a lot of the residents personally, so she would be a very efficient consultant to do the work.
Okay. I'm just looking at the forward, 212 is probably going to cause a lot of opportunity for land acquisition in the future. If it makes sense to bring in a headcount to do that for the next two or three years, it might make, it makes sense.
Okay, thank you.
Next one I had was the 750,000 for the drug court. I think we're just receiving those dollars. It's just a point, one of the top topics, one of the top topics at AMC was, there's opioid dollars coming through. And so I don't think it's a discussion for today, but is, how are we going to choose to direct those dollars? And then the last one I had was the RJM contract, and maybe this is a good question for Marty, is the wording of it made it seem like it's the exact same dollar amount that we had proposed and approved before. This is just a formality to bring it up to speed. Okay, so no dollars have changed, we're on, we're on budget and on topic. Good, great, thank you. So ahead.
Any other discussion?
Mr. Chair, if I may, I just wanted to also comment on the drug treatment court program and just kudos to court services for to continue to apply for those grants and to keep that program active.
Any other discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor of approving the consent as written, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Item 10, 6.1, a settlement agreement for right-of-way acquisition for Highway 24. That will call up our right-of-way senior agent, Mr. Patrick Lambert. We've seen you before on this project, Pat.
Morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. Yes, you do. This is just a small additional drainage and utility easement that we needed to require for a culvert end. And so we, Mr. Lynch asked to, because of his relationships with those people, asked to be put on the regular agenda, so.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Lambert? If not, is there a motion to approve the resolution for settlement to the impacted property owner related to the Highway 24 project?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Udoman, second by Commissioner Fahy. Any discussion? All in favor of that motion, say aye.
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 Opposed? And one abstention. So motion passes. Thank you, Patrick.
Thank you.
With that, we'll follow our agenda, go to 6.2, which is going to be a work session item that has to do with parks and trails. With that, we were going into, do we need a motion, or just go into a recess for recess?
I think you need a motion to go into recess.
Motion to go.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Lynch, second by myself, to go into recess to discuss Parks and Trails Asset Management Plan. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are now in recess. Thank you. We're now back in session. We just finished the work session that talked about Parks and Trails Asset Management. And with that, we're up to 7.1, 2023 property tax levy and budget. We'll start with Mr. Dave Hemsey, our county administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good morning, still is morning. Good morning, board members. I'd like to present the last step, my favorite step in the budget process, since it is a long one. And I appreciate not only the patience, but the input that you provided for the past several months, along with division directors and others who provide the input. Definitely, definitely is a lengthy process, but intentionally so. There were a number of opportunities for public input, as was mentioned this morning. So I think it's a very good, robust, healthy process to undertake. Today, as the last, last step, I'll be asking for your approval of the budget. I will give the executive summary, and Dave Frishman will give the additional detail. I will try to move as quick as I can. I think this is maybe the third or fourth time you've seen this, so I won't belabor the points. And although I would say, under these challenges, things seem to be moving rapidly, or more rapidly than ever, with the economy and what's going on with inflation and the labor market. But it still is relevant to our planning document. I'm not suggesting changes to the document. There are a number of intentional dollars set aside for the things that you see on the chart here. But not necessarily unprecedented either, but just a much different, more challenging environment than, than we've, I think, ever dealt with. Tax dollars at work, it's not just about collecting the taxes, it's most importantly about the services that we provide. There's not a complete list, but a robust list of items on the screen. Counties, of course, don't always get recognized as doing this work, but we do. We are definitely in the trenches, providing the work, partnering with others. And these are just a few examples of the kinds of things that we do. And here's where the dollar is spent. In this case, this illustration shows how the $109, this would be a monthly bill to get a little bit better perspective on it, that equates to the $1,312 annually for the $450,000 average home. It's almost hard to say that number. It's just an eye-popping number. And of course, that does relate to market valuations, which, yes, understandably, we all get confused about market valuations, taxation, all these other complications in our system. But I think we always ask, focus on, on not only the bottom line, but in this case, county taxes. And we try and be very transparent and, and simplify it. And in this case, this is just one way to look at that average value home and the general categories where those, where the dollars are spent. And pictures are always good to get to a better understanding. Libraries, a very popular service. You can see the $7 per month for, for a great library system. And, and again, we're talking about levy, in this case, 6.7% of county levy, which is another word for property taxation. Not other forms, sources of revenue. That's the focus of today's meeting. Similar case with our roadway system. And of course, Lyndon and company do a great job of capturing other dollars, in particular at the state and federal level. But in terms of levy, around $7 a month to take care of the roadways, our guys do a great job. Their staff do a great job. And if you, you know, keep an eye on it over the next few days, you'll see that, it sounds like. Parks and Trails, we're just talking about that. There's a great value, and perhaps maybe we need a little bit more investment, was one of the messages today. But let's not lose sight of the fact that we do have a great system and a number, number of great, great regional parks, and for around $2 a month in levy dollars. Those are funded. And emergency response, a little bit of a different kind of service, is one of those that you probably don't notice too much until you need it. But boy, if you need it, you want reliable, you want good staff in place to take care of it. And for around $4 a month, we provide that service. So just a few examples, I'm going to hand it over to Dave, and I'll, I'll be back to ask for your approval of the budget. But Dave, take it away. There are, there's a few maybe new slides in here, but generally the same presentation you've seen.
Welcome, Mr. Frishman, our Property and Finance Director.
Thank you, County Administrator Hemsey and Chair Degler and board, good morning. The, I'll start with a little more of the numbers, dive into the, more of the details. The overall tax base is up over 20% for 2023, so we're at $20 billion, billion dollars of the county tax base.
And to put that in perspective, the state is sitting on 17-point-some billion in surplus.
Yeah, that's right. Yeah. Very, very good context. In terms of new construction, 360 million, which corresponds to $900,000 in new, or increased levy, that the board can increase our levy for 2023 and not impact average value at home because the new construction. The taxpayers in the new construction are paying, will pay for that share. Focusing on, on the average value homes, as County Minister mentioned, the average value homes up 450,000 in Carver County, so 20% increase. Commercial's up 10%, and the average value in ag properties up 9%. We've talked about this, but, you know, not only does the, the pie gets bigger, and when the local governments are increasing their levy, but who pays that pie? Who's, how big your portion of that pie changes based on how your market value does compared to other properties? So there is a shift from commercial properties and ag properties paying a little bit less, and that burden's being passed to the home, homes, the residential, as well as within the residential properties. If you had a home that was above 20%, you're going to get a higher percentage. That, your piece of the pie is going to get bigger. And if your home was at 20% or lower, you're actually getting a smaller percentage of that pie. So your burden is shifting behind the scenes because of the, of the value. So everyone thinks of, oh, my property taxes are going up 25%. Oh, the county states spending, or the county local government, city, township are spending too much, you get too much money. Well, really, what's happening is the county and cities are only getting the increased levy amount that they're levying, the board's approving. Everything else is just, you're offsetting, your, your pie is getting bigger, that means somebody else's pie is getting smaller. That's all going on behind the scenes, it gets, it gets very complicated. But in the end, as County Minister said, we try to be as transparent as we can in terms of the tax impact on the average value at home. In terms of the, the actual numbers, this, this is one of my favorite slides. It really captures how we put our budgets together over the last, going back four years. You can see I didn't highlight anything in 2022 or 2020, more than normal years. 2021 was the middle of COVID. That was, you can see those numbers are very different than the others. And now in 2023, we're seeing more of the, of the trends that we saw in the, in the, in the previous years. I put in red, the county tax levy increase, just over 3 million. And the salaries and benefit projection for 2023, just with the current existing staff, is over, is almost over 4.5 million. So you can see right off the bat, we have, we have a gap between what our county tax levy is going to increase and what our increased costs are for the existing, existing staff. And you can see we had that in 2022. But going back to 2020, we actually had our levy increase was right in line with where our staffing projections were. So you can just see over time how that's grown. And that really is where we kind of start the budgeting process. And we, we started the process with a gap because of those two line items. We did find in the, in the countywide levy adjustments, over a million dollars. And I have a slide highlighting a little more, preventing a little more detail with that, along with the other line items as well. And just point out the FTEs, levy-funded FTEs, just 161,000 for 2023. The detail behind the countywide levy adjustments, you can see the 930,000 highlighted there. That was the redirect of debt service that was, had paid off. Previous bond, bond sale was redirected into the operating budget. And then incremental revenue, some adjustments we're making with the, with this some state, they were impacting our property taxes. It was 200,000, and then vacancy savings was 300,000. So we didn't change the percentage, we just, as, as our staffing grows, we get an additional amount. And I have a slide to show that, too. So that was over the 1, 1 million, 1.23 million in countywide levy adjustments. The vacancy savings, as I mentioned, that's 300,000 we increased, so now we're up to 4.4 million. So we, you know, we, the calculation is 5.1% of our projected salary and benefits, which is 87 million. Because that 87 million is growing, we're getting, we're capturing additional amounts in terms of our budgeted amount for vacancy savings. The, you can, a comparison, and the orange is the actual vacancy savings, and the gold is what was budgeted. And you can see we flatlined that the last four years, now at 5.1%. And even though we've had some orange above that, as, we made some, some strategic changes in our, in our salaries, especially related to Sheriff's Office. And we're, we, we think that's going to come back in terms of our actual is going to be closer to that 5% going forward. So we're comfortable with that number, but we think we're still going to, we're going to be watching that very closely to make sure that that comes down as, as anticipated. CPA, County Program Aid, there's a graph going back to 2014, and it shows that where that, where those dollars went. Orange is the general fund, the gold was our capital improvement plans. And then we started allocating more money to one-time projects, anticipating a reimbursement that we're getting from the state for the 101 bridge was going to end. And we needed more one-time dollars to fund those projects. So you can see in green, we started adding. And that's where we've been focused, and additional CPA has gone into our one-time projects, which is known as our attachment E in our budget schedules. The division trends, this is part of our process where costs, as they increase or decrease. And they're not, the divisions aren't able to manage those within their budget, then they request additional levies for those increases. You can see facilities with utilities, you know, across the country, we're seeing the increased costs, and they estimated they need additional 70,000. And then you can see the various other line items. And then down at the bottom, we had some revenue decreases that reflect the trends. And we also, the good news was, the increases related to various contracts and Health and Human Services reimbursement. So the net of all that was 154,000. And then we went to, we're still, the gap was, the budget gap was not quite closed, so we went back to our divisions and gave them targets to adjust their budgets further. And you can see the various line items, mainly in the revenue area. And then they, that accounted for another 200, just over 200,000 in division levy adjustments. Slide, Attachment B in your packets, you'll see the staffing, and these are all the requests. And then the. And then the, the bolded items are the ones that are included in the County Minister's recommendation for the 2023 budget. And you can see they net to 161,000 in, in new tax levy dollars. There's additional FTEs that are funded by other sources and just over, just under one and a half FTEs that are included in the 2023 budget that are funded by new levy dollars. The, well, I should mention the, back on that, there was a parks request for staffing, that was not included. But that, you know, that was part of this study that we're looking at in terms of the need for that. And we're, we'll prioritize that going forward in, in, in next year's budget. Attachment C in your packet, those are our capital improvement plans. We highlight in those the total amount, like road and bridges, just over 19 million in terms of our CIP, which is actually down from 2022. In 2024, it's going to rebound back up again, according to our plan. But the majority of that, or all that, all of those dollars for the new road and bridges are other sources. And highlighted in yellow there, the county levy that goes towards road and bridges is, is focused on road preservation. So somebody else's, we're using other people's money to build it and then we're using the county's money to, to maintain that. And that's a 100,000 increase from 2022. The board recalls, eight years ago, we went through a similar study that, that we're doing right now with parks. And as, and the result of that is Linden, the Public Works Director, said he needed a million dollars in 10 years, so 100,000 dollar increase each year for 10 years. And that was eight years ago and we stuck to that schedule, I think, every year. So we have two more years of that and then we'll have increased that amount for road preservation so we can maintain our roads according, following his asset management tool that they're now going to implement on the parks building in the parks area so that we're on schedule. And that's part of our strategic, long-term strategic plan to increase that for two more years. Parks and trails, no county tax levy, but we do have requests for other, funding from other sources. And you can see that the 50/50 match, we've been talking for the phase three, Lake Waconia Regional Park with the state legislature, our, our contribution would be 2.25 million. And then the other building, as well as the regional authority with no county tax levy dollars. Attachment D is our five-year replacement schedule. That's 1.6 million. And we, we have a schedule going on for five years on everything we can think of that needs to be replaced from, from, you know, plow trucks and roofs and IT equipment and everything's on a schedule. We did not increase that from 2022. We thought we could live with the, the current year, or the current amount of 1.6 million, but we'll be reevaluating that for 2024 and I would expect a 100,000 increase going forward. Preliminary tax levy increases for the metro counties, you can see it ranges from Anoka at zero up to Scott County at 7.4. And the County Administrator's recommended in the levy, preliminary levy adopted by the county board in September was at that 4.9%. Impact on the average value at home, so it, it, there's a three, a 4.9 increase represents 3, 3 million above the 62 million from last year, so right around 65 million. And the annual tax increase on the average value at home is $48. And the, so the property tax increase from the county is 3.8%. This is a, a graph going back showing how our, the average, the tax burden on the average value at home, going back to 2013, how in gold, red, I guess, how that's tracked. And then the, the gold above it is the CPI. You can see we've, we've followed that fairly well. And then the Administrator's recommended increase, the one I just mentioned, the 3.8% is on that 450,000 dollar average value at home, that's in the, that's in the brown part of the chart. Year-end savings, this is, this is to update the board. So at the beginning, you had 3.1 million. There was a jail security upgrade that we had initially planned to do in, was a request for our 2023 budget. As the sheriff looked into it closer, they decided they needed to do it in 2022 and not wait for 2023. So the board approved taking money out of the year-end savings by 315,000. There's also a loan to the ditch authority to do the redeterminations. So that's an ongoing process, but that will be paid back from the ditch, uh, property owners once the redetermination process is completed. So our current balance is around 2.3 million. And that represents all the money from previous budgets, our revenues less expenditures that has not been allocated out typically. You know, we, we'll see how we do budget to actual at the end of the year. And then usually the, the year-end savings is going, will go up a little bit. And then sometimes we allocate that out to other projects. The, the, in the past, it's been to the 101 bridge, remember that? Where every, every penny we could, other big transportation projects, potentially park projects could, could come from our year-end savings.
Minor question, really doesn't pertain to much. The jail security upgrade, do we get interest on that loan? Referring to the fact that the loan to the ditch authority, ditch authorities, if they're not paid in the year that they're assessed, we usually charge the landowner an interest rate.
Yeah, typically the, the special assessments are one year and we're not charging interest on those. If there's a multi-year one, and that might happen with the redeterminations depending on the, the benefit or the, the amount, they could be offered a five year and then there would be interest rates. The loan to the ditch authority from the county board was at a zero interest. We are planning on, and Mary Kay, she doesn't like when I make her do extra work. So it's all our money, so we just kept it clean and said, yeah, we'll, we'll borrow it to you and then the ditches will pay it back once they get it.
Thank you.
Just update, this is our federal money for COVID. The total amount we received is just over 33 million. And through December, this is where the money's been allocated. Majority of it's been spent, but in broadband and in housing support, those two big chunks, those are, that have been money that's set aside, been approved, but not, not all spent yet. Highlighted the budget stabilization account, PSA, that just over 4.1 million. That's unallocated at this point. Our recommendation is to designate that to cover our cash flow reserve, which is, which is a, it's now a 30, 30% of next year's operating budget. Because we, we spend money every day, but we only get our large taxes, revenue in twice a year from property tax payments. We do need to have enough cash during the first part of the year and in the, the second part of the year after the taxes come in, where we have enough cash on hand to, to keep paying our bills and keep the lights on for our staff. And because of our mark-to-market adjustment that we anticipate because of the interest rates rising so quickly in 2022, that's going to be a, a large mark-to-market adjustment. We will accrete that back, we will get that back, you know, in, in the future. But at the year end, it'll, it'll be a signative number. So we're recommending, recommending that we set that money aside through May of 2023, at which time the audit will be done. And so we'll know where, how we came out in terms of our budget actual, we'll know how much cash we have, we'll know if we still need to reserve that or set that aside. We'll give them an update on the board on, on if we still need that or if we can allocate that to other potential projects. So until May of next year, we're going to, we're going to set that aside for cash flow.
Mr. Chair?
And to clarify the language, to make that allocation for cash flow is in the, in your budget resolution. That action would be part of your decision today.
Thank you, Dave. Long-term financial plan, road and bridges, and we, this was a workshop we had with the board. This is, we're, we're now actively in the, we've begun the 2024 budget process. Capital's where we start and we update our CIPs. The discussion we just had with the parks is going to be a, a key focus as, as they continue their assessments and continue identifying what their needs are, what their budget requests are for capital, as well as for staffing. We will roll that into the 2024 budget. But it all, it all starts with our, in terms of our CIPs. And we'll update both the road and bridges, our building miscellaneous. We do have the master space plan study that we restarted again after COVID. That's looking at all of our buildings and, and what the future needs are and, and assessing costs. So we're, we're rolling that into our, our CIPs. And parks and trails, as we mentioned, focusing on, on maintenance of what we have. As we mentioned, there, there's a lot of dollars that come into parks, but we've been putting it all towards new projects. Highway 5 underpass, the Waconia, no, Lakeside Pavilion. That's any dollars that, that they were getting was going towards those projects. If we, if we say, let's not put that money towards new projects, let's put it towards modernizing and updating the stuff we have, that'll create a, a, a fair amount of money. And then we'll, if we need more, then we'll be rolling that into as part of our budget process going forward. And, and in terms of money available for future bond sales, likely related to the results of the master space plan study, there are, are continuing to have additional money that's being right now allocated to our debt service, but that'll be paid off in, in real soon, 2024, 2025. And then again, it, once again, in 2030. After 2030 will be, the county board, if they don't issue any more debt, would be debt-free. That's, that would be the last debt service payment the county would make. Terms of operations, it's an ongoing challenge for county staff in terms of the, the growing tax base and the impact on our FTEs, the, the complexity of the work we do, as well as the demand from the public and the, the tax base increasing, especially on the departments that don't have revenue and offsetting revenue source, health and human services. A lot of the services they provide to the growing tax base, they then get reimbursed from the feds or from the state. So it helps offset the, the impact on the budget. But there are departments in, in the county attorney's office, employee relations, IT, where they're, they, as, as we grow, they don't have additional revenue to offset that. So it really puts them in a bind. So we're focusing on that throughout the process. Employee health insurance, we do have a rate cap for 2024 at 12%, but then we'll, we will be going out for, out to the market again in 2023 in, in anticipation of, I guess in 2024, anticipation of not having rate caps for 2025. We'll have a new, new contract going forward. The FTE requests, looking forward, as I mentioned, you know, the next, next five years, you can see the 50, 54 requests for FTEs over the next five years, that's the pie chart. And you can see the bulk of those are in the next two years. And then you can see by division or by department, I guess, with the one spike there being the library in the middle of the chart. And that's anticipating the, the Chaska Library, the new project, request an additional staff. County employees per thousand, we have two different population forecasts, one's from the Met Council and then one's is a, is from our own staff looking at historical. And you can see if we add, you know, between six and 12 FTEs, you can see where those two charts go, you know, down over time with differing, different projections based on where the actual, or how fast the residents are added to the county's tax base. And as the County Minister mentioned, this is the last step and a, a lengthy process begins back in May at our workshop. And the, the request is for the, approve the final 2023 levy and budget resolution as long, as well as the, the 2024 long-term financial plan. And those are, the two motions are in front of the board.
Questions for Mr. Fishman? Or Mr. Hemsey, either one, so.
Just a question to make sure, WMO is in, in this resolution, right?
Yes. Yep. Yes, highlighted on the board there too.
Oh, there it is. Okay.
Thoughts, comments? We have a couple of motions in front of us. Any thoughts?
Mr. Chair.
Richard Fahy.
I'll make a motion to approve the 2023 budget and levy resolution as presented.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'd second that, Mr. Chair.
Motion by Commissioner Fahy, second by Commissioner Lynch. What it says, a motion to approve, that's the resolution found on page 48 and 49 and 50, those three pages. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Uh, Commissioner Udoman.
I think it's helpful that if somebody were to tune into this meeting and, and not have the context of a very laborious process, that they can hear how people vote.
How many months of laborious?
No. I mean, it's, it's a process. Like when we have people in here for truth in taxation or budget night and, and they want to change their valuation, that's an education process. And so I think it's, it's fair that, so with, with one of our primary responsibilities so people know how we vote. Been the same all along, I went two and a half to three and a half percent, nothing for me has changed on that. Is 4.9% frivolous or unnecessary? No, I think it's justified as to how we get there. I just think we can push the envelope further. And I think Mary Kay and, and Fishman, you guys put, and, and staff put, put their superpowers to work and articulated a very complex budget to the taxpayers if they wanted to go through this in, in a dozen or so pages as to how we got there. But a couple of other things I think are, are lost in the work that got us to where we're at. In the last year, we've had savings from fleet savings by looking at the savings with a, a lack of mileage on a number of our vehicles. We've had the benefit of being the fastest growing county in the state, 2.1%. And you've painted the picture of that benefit. The first one and a half percent of levy is approximately covered through growth. We've invested heavily in work from home and the savings and efficiencies and that's reflected within our headcount. Not having to let go of anybody or do anything dramatic, we've grown into where we're at today. And I think that we're taking the lead in a lot of ways that other counties will follow. But it's just prudent to look at the workforce and understand that we can't grow at the level that our, that our county grows. And that's reflected in a big savings there. We've had a huge influx of ARPA dollars that we've put to good use in a lot of, a lot of ways and federal fundings and state fundings. But we also have the opportunity to do a couple of other things. One is to push turnover down. I estimate that where we're at with turnover, we have a million and a half worth of savings within there. If we do a better job in the next year to push that down. It's also not lost on me that we're the, if, if we pass 4.9, we would be the second highest increase year over year. All of our peers, with the exception of Scott County at 7.4%, 7.4% are at or below our 4.9. And then one other data point, if you take the 1,312 dollars across the average house value in Carver County in '23 at 450, that would mean roughly $3 or $2.92 per thousand value would be our approximate tax. So I know there's a lot of calculations, 82 actually, from the state. And then the year before, at $1,264, over a $375,000 average house value, that would be roughly $3.37. So our family will take on $210 worth of benefit, which is about, or, or additional costs, but our valuation went up 20 some percent. And so one last thing, it's not lost on me that there's families within our community that are trying to shoulder that burden. We're the most affluent county in the state and we're the first to tip the, we're tipping more people over that $500,000 rate, which pushes your tax rate higher. We're graduating more people out of the, the homestead credit. And, and there's very real challenges within, in Carver County. And so I don't think 4.9% is, is frivolous. I just think that we can push the envelope further and work a little bit harder. So I won't be supporting it and those are the reasons that I'll be voting against 4.9.
Other comments? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Aye.
Motion carries. Motion carries, 4 to 1. That brings us on to 7.2, 2024 Long-Term Financial Plan. Again, I think it's listed as, Mr. Fishman taking that one to start with?
Uh, yeah, I covered that in the, in the presentation.
Okay, it's all part of the same motion.
Yep, we can do that.
Motion to approve the 2024 Long-Term Financial Plan. Is there a motion to approve the 2024 Long-Term Financial Plan?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Motion by Commissioner Lynch, is there a second? I'll second that. Any discussion? I think it's fair to say that we've talked about a lot of things today in our work session and even after the work session. We do, it's none of, none of these ideas are new for us. We've, these are long-term financial decisions that have been laid out before us and we're just trying to follow and readjust the plan as we go along. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of approving the 2024 Long-Term Financial Plan Resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Lynch?
I'll make a motion to recess as the county board convenes the Carver County Regional Rail Authority.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Lynch, second by Commissioner Udoman to Motion by Commissioner Lynch, second by Commissioner Udoman to recess as the county board and re, um, and reconvene as the Carver County Regional Rail Authority. With that, we'll call on Mr. Rogent, oop, Mr. Fishman.
He always makes me do this.
Okay. The heavy lifting has to be done by something, somebody. What do you got for us in the regional rail?
I'm gonna, uh, good afternoon, Mr. Chair and Board members.
As he looks at the clock.
Dave Fishman, County Property and Finance Director. Uh, Lyndon is, is not here, uh, but I can step in. Um, so the, the request, uh, for the regional rail authority is 199,000. Uh, that's no change from 2022. And just to remind the board that this levy is used for stewardship of the regional rail corridors and ongoing funding for staffing, um, the, the day-to-day operations and, you know, weed control and tree trimming and, and all that to keep our trails open. Um, so at this time, there's a motion, uh, requesting a motion to approve the region rail authority's 2023 tax levy at 190,000 and their 2023 budget at 201,000.
I move approval. Motion by Udoman, second by Workman, uh, to approve the CCRRA's levy and budget. Any discussion? Quick, kinda, uh, the budget and the levy do not correlate. Does that mean we're going to be deficit spending for one year, uh, 2,000 bucks?
Mr. Chair, I, I believe that's, uh, they collect a fee on property that they own and that's a revenue, non, non-tax levy revenue. Um, that offsets that, so the budget's balanced, uh, they will not be, um, dipping into that, but.
Thank you very much for that explanation. Uh, any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of approving the levy on the budget for the CCRRA, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries unanimously. With that, is there a motion to come out of regional rail and reconvene as the board?
Do we have to or can we just adjourn?
You want to come out of that?
So move.
Motion by Commissioner Lynch, second by Commissioner Udoman to, uh, reconvene as the county board from the regional rail. Any discussion on that motion? All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Seeing none, we are now the county board. And with that, we turn it back over to Mr. Hemsey, our administrator for report.
Uh, one more meeting, 2022. Uh, so let's celebrate, we'll do that with our retirees.
Don't wish your life away.
Well, we'll take it, one more. Uh, 8 o'clock, so if, if you could show up, it'd be, be great.
Next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday, 8 o'clock. Uh, thanks to Diane and, and Employee Relations and Commissioner Udoman for the idea. We'll, we'll see, uh, what kind of, what kind of crowd we get, but we'll be ready. So we'll see at 8 hopefully, and then, uh, 9:30 start time for the meeting. That's it, Mr. Chair.
Okay, anything else that should be brought up, Commissioner?
I just want to mention that, uh, County Attorney Metz came late. He wasn't shirking his responsibilities, he was in court on a very important matter, so.
Well said. Uh, is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Motion by Commissioner Lynch, second by Commissioner Udoman. Uh, no discussion on that motion. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? We are adjourned, thank you.
Did you hang him high? Metz?